Former Green St. Patty's tie. Okay, we're gonna call the mean to order. It is Tuesday, March 14th, 2023. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I missed that down at the lake. I just really missed it. Okay, minutes of reports received and filed?
We have the county treasurer's February reconciliation report.
Okay. Commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Planning commission meeting tonight, transportation committee meeting tomorrow morning. Jeff City Fire Department, they have a dinner fundraiser at Bandana's tomorrow night, so if you want to go get dinner and support our local baseball team. Thursday's Chamber Connections, something about Eric Landlord's birthday or something in there, too. I don't know what's going on with that, why that, how that got on my calendar. If he just put that on there or what? House has fish fry Friday. Not sure who else has one, but it's St. Pat's Day. You don't eat fish on Friday.
Well, even though the bishop gave us-
We don't have to eat fish this Friday.
The bishop gave us a special dispensation.
Yeah. As long as you eat certain things.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hey, for you non-senators out there, you can eat meat on Friday then. All right, I think that's-
This sounds pretty good.
Yeah.
Are we having a birthday party for Eric?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Did you put that on my calendar?
Really didn't though.
Okay, okay.
I don't know, as I'm going to last flight at about four o'clock.
Okay, well, let's keep moving ahead.
All right.
Western Commissioner Otto, would you-
This morning, I attended a city board of adjustment meeting, Wednesday, city transportation commission meeting at city hall, before this meeting, Thursday salute 23, and next Monday safety net meeting. That's what I have.
Yeah, I've got transportation down tomorrow, too, but I won't be able to make it. Thursday, there, we're having discussion with, about Columbia Regional Airport, and then there is an unhoused solution put on by the Central Missouri Community Action Team at 6:00 PM to discuss housing for our poor and needy. So that's all I've got. Appointment by committee, reappointment of Stacy Fick and John Gulick to the Joint Public Library Board.
Make the motion to reappoint Stacy Fick and John Gulick to the Joint Public Library Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have any commission comments? Bids and contracts, approval and signing of quote with mid-mo dents for ceramic protection of ambulance paint.
Somebody else want to call? Good morning.
Morning.
So as I kind of passed along in an email, one of the things that we've noticed with the three new ambulances is that they, they have a clear coat protection on them, and just due to the extra height that these ambulances have had, when we've gone out into the county, they have started rubbing against some brushes, some trees, and we get some fine lines in that clear coat and on the decals of the ambulance that you can't see from far away, but they don't look the greatest when you get up close to it. We've buffed them out a couple times, so we've kind of researched a way to, to protect and kind of keep our investment looking good, and what it keeps coming back to is we've been suggested a ceramic coating, which is a layer that goes on top of the clear coat, which is pretty hard and has like a five-year protection value on it. Some industry experts had told us that we had some pretty decent folks who do this work in and around our area. One of them was at the lake, another one was mid-mo dents off of Ten Mile Drive, reached out to them, got a quote, and they quoted us $1,809 per ambulance to get that ceramic coating, and that includes a pre-detail to get out any of the imperfections that might already be there. So, in my opinion, it's a pretty small investment to keep the ambulances looking good for the duration of their life. Have any answered any questions?
No. I did it on one of my cars, and it really is expensive, but it's, yeah.
Well, I'd heard of the ceramic coating. I'd never heard of it being five years and lasting and being like a hard shell, so I made some calls and ended up getting some good references for memo dent. Talked to Andy, and he said, yeah, it will last five years, and I know it's expensive, too, and the way he bid them, it's about the twice the price of doing a regular vehicle because there's a lot more area you gotta cover. So, yeah, I just, I want to keep an eye on it and, you know, see how it does last, try it out. I think it's worth trying.
Yeah, one of the things, you know, the, the blue ambulances, you know, they, if you get up close to them, they, they have some scratches and some, some clear coat fading, and we recently had a quote to get one of the reserve ambulances kind of redone. That was about $3,300 just to get some of the marks and stuff out of it. So, I hope that a little prevention goes a long ways, and down the lines, we won't have any of the similar issues.
After talking to Andy, I, I felt pretty confident that it will mitigate some of those issues, and if it lasts five years, that's great.
Right.
I might be a little skeptical about the full five years, but we'll see.
But, you know, if we get, you know, our ambulance is usually two to three years, hard frontline service, and then they go into the reserve, and, you know, they're, they're not in service as often. So if we can get two or three years of good coverage to get it through the beat and, and wear and tear phase, then I think we'd be sitting pretty good.
I'm in favor of this as well, just a curiosity, that the next time we get a new ambulance, is that something can be installed at that time?
Correct.
Before it comes off the-
And I think one of the things that Chief Boils, who's kind of an expert in, in vehicles due to a previous career path, apparently our old ambulances were painted with a different kind of paint that got super hard, super quick. Apparently that paint has been done away with due to environmental stuff. So, this is why we are now back to clear coat and, and having some of these issues in his opinion. So, I think in the future, we'll see how these first three do. Hopefully it holds up well, it's a good product for us, and then it's just something that we'll do as soon as we take delivery of them, just to keep them protected. So it's, $1,809 per ambulance, just quick math. So that's $5,427 for all three. Covered out of contingency.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I don't know if we need to, do we need to vote on it or come in?
It, it's coming out of, it's coming out of 660, so it's coming out of, you know, my contingency for the year. I don't think I needed a motion, I just wanted to, to put it in front of you.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing it up.
Okay.
So, then on the ones that we have coming in, let us know how we need to do that as well.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Approval and signing of bid for Lush Road gravel road upgrade 2021-901-1.
So the bids, the bids were opened on Friday, March 10th, in Mira Excavating Redlow. This project involves upgrading Lush Road from a gravel road to an asphalt paved road. Public Works Department recommends awarding the base bid and alternate one. Alternate one includes using a material transfer vehicle when laying the surface lift of the asphalt. The total cost of the contract was $1,630,492.36. Engineer's estimate was $1,860,492.2. And we are actually over budget on this, and it's actually coming out of the 805 sales tax, but we have an estimated this project for two years now, so we do have some things in the works to get money transferred around to cover everything, so.
Yeah, as Matt said, it comes out, the bulk of it is coming out of the old 805 sales tax, appropriate sales tax, and that amount was $1,325,000. Due to price inflation and other things, the project came in higher, and the appropriation transfer is with Debbie right now to take it out of contingency, the additional funds. And with that transfer, we're also adding a, basically a project contingency, so it won't be the exact amount over, it'll be an additional, what'd you say, 100?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand dollars.
So it was over because of the inflation, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. But the engineer's budget was, or estimate was done lately, so still below the engineer's estimate.
It's below the engineer's estimate, but higher than what we had budgeted.
Okay. Just making sure I was following that right, so I'm okay with it.
I am as well.
All right. Make the motion to award the bid and sign a construction contract for the Lush Road gravel road upgrade with Mira Excavating.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we have the Jessica show. She's really becoming popular at mission meetings. Approval and signing of Gray Shift sole source.
The Gray Shift provides a software called GrayKey for the sheriff's department. It's a software that only works with androids and able to pull the data off of them. This will be purchased through a grant, and the total is $31,420. This ad's already ran in the paper, so today I'm needing approval of the sole source as well as the quote.
I'm gonna give you all these, so I don't have to be getting them 600 times.
That's part of our health program.
And they have sign your texts. Okay. Thanks.
We'll put you at the back of the room.
Quick, a quick question. Do we have folks that carry iPhones and then some that carry Android?
I'm assuming so, because one of the sole sources was for androids and the other one was for iPhones.
Are those phones that we buy? Are these are individual phones that we pay stipends on?
Well, I think they're probably, maybe not our people's phones, but the, I don't know. From people there.
Are these volunteers?
Any information?
Oh.
I think they're looking to get information off of these phones. I don't think they're our phones.
Right.
I think they're-
I don't know, through investigations of some sort, through somebody who's, I don't know. I'd have to ask the sheriff.
Phone cracking into proprietary systems.
Yes.
Yeah, it's investigative tool to get data off.
The detectives use it as well.
So if we made the criminals use only iPhones, we didn't, wouldn't have to get this for iPhone.
That's right. If they all use iPhones, we don't have to buy one self.
All right. Just trying to save a few dollars.
It's the way I am.
It's one of those days, I can tell.
Okay, so you want us to approve and sign the sole source and?
And the quote.
And the quote.
Yes.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve and sign the sole source and the quote with Gray Shift. That'll be it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval and signing of Crime Point sole source.
Crime Point is going to provide a pole cam for the sheriff's department. It's going to be purchased through the same grant. The total is $28,313. This one has to, already ran in the paper, so I'm needing approval and signing of the quote and the sole source.
Okay. We'll go to that then. All right, make a motion to approve and sign the sole source and the quote with Crime, Crime Point.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval and signing of Penlink sole source.
This is a software that runs with Gray Shift and Avail, which is a sole, the next sole source that does the androids, and so this will put the information into a readable format together. It's going to be purchased through the same grant, and the total is $9,999.56, and I'm needing approval of the sole source as well as the quote.
Did somebody just try to keep this under 10,000? Is that what happened here? 99, 99.56.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. Make a motion to approve and sign the sole source and quote with Penlink.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval and signing of Avail Forensics sole source.
Avail provides a software called Celebrite for the sheriff's department, which is the software that works with the iPhones, and is able to pull the data off of them. The total is going to be $19,714, and today I'm needing approval of the sole source and the quote.
All right, make a motion to approve and sign the sole source and the quote with Avail Forensics.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of Outdoor Warning Consulting sole source.
Outdoor Warning Consultants is for the rapid warn controller for our Wheatland sirens. It's going to be purchased through a grant as well, and the total is $19,225, and today I'm needing approval and signing of the sole source as well as the quote.
Good. All right, make a motion to approve and sign the sole source and the quote with Outdoor Warning Consulting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Okay, new business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review. This is just for the P cards, so it shouldn't happen.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of tactical vest and helmets for EMS.
Yeah, so if you remember roughly five years ago, EMS obtained a grant from Firehouse Subs to purchase ballistic protection. Ballistic protection runs about five years is its span of life. So we were able to join forces with Jeff City Fire Department. They wrote an RFP for ballistic protection. We've piggybacked off of that, and we're looking to not only replace our ballistic protection vests over the next couple of years, but we also want to make sure that we increase our level of protection, so we did go ahead and bid out ballistic helmets as well. So I have a quote here for 33 ballistic helmets and 20 ballistic vests, which would allow us to put two helmets on each one of our, our rigs, and then we'll start individually ordering vests for, for our employees, and we'll replace these over the next couple of years. This wasn't a capital budget. Because we were able to find such, it did allow us to go ahead and give like $16,000, just asking, we approve that today. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Good with it?
Good. Should I take a motion?
Are you putting a PO out to this fender?
Yes.
It'd be better.
I'm, I'll offer a motion to approve the purchase of the tactical vest and helmets in the amount of $16,000, not to exceed.
Sure. Quote's for $16,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Request an approval of care leave time by the care leave committee.
Well, we are, I'll take this one. We are missing our chairperson, and we do miss him, but I will try my best. We've had a request from an employee. Because of HIPAA and everything else, we can't state any facts about the case, but the committee did meet, and they're recommending that we do give a 30-day, initial 30-day time to this employee that's in need of, has exhausted all of his leave, or leave, sorry. So I'd ask for approval of a 30-day, and if the employee doesn't need the 30 days, then we won't obviously use the 30 days.
For those who maybe aren't familiar with this care leave, other employees have banked these, this, these hours, right? So it's, it's almost like employees trading or giving, not trading, but giving hours to one of their fellow employees.
That's right. There's a form that employees have to fill out to donate their time. They can only donate vacation, comp, or holiday pay. They can't donate sick for sick, but we have bylaws and rules that we follow as a committee to make sure the employee meets the qualifications, and then we bring it to the commission for ultimate approval. Yes, it is employees giving their time to other employees in a pool.
Right. And the committee is made up of a chair and how many folks?
I have, we have the chairperson, the finance, one department head, and four employees. You guys do appoint those.
Yeah, I think that's-
Okay.
And I commend our employees for giving this time.
It is definitely very valuable for our employees in need, for sure.
Yes.
So if you could just approve the 30-day recommendation by the care leave committee.
I'll offer a motion to approve the care leave request for the 30-day for one, one person approved by the care leave committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval and signing of change order one for Health Department driveway project.
So, this change order's for the Health Department driveway project number 2022-28. Due to the location of the gas pipeline, the slopes of the ditch could not be achieved as shown on the plans, therefore the slopes were steep and in line with rip wrap to prevent erosion. Change order number one was changing the plans after the bid opening. The bottom elevation of the type A inlet was lowered and the location of the outlet pipe was changed. And change order number two was required to bridge the soft subgrade over the gas pipeline that runs underneath the new driveway. The pipeline company had disturbed this area prior to the bid opening, which resulted in unsuitable subgrade for the contractor to work with.
Now, you mentioned a change order two as well?
Well, on our pay estimates, they're one and two, but it's lumped as one for you all, for the contract, so.
All right.
What is the total?
The total for this change is $30,379.20.
Do you have it there in front of you?
I don't know if I can pull it up or not. Was that in that other email?
That was the first email that I sent.
Oh, I got it now. Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the change order for the Health Department driveway, change order number one. It's all on the number one then?
Yes.
Okay, just change order number one then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Discussion of ventilation fans for the maintenance shop at Public Works.
So, a month and a half ago, give or take, we had discussed air conditioning to the shop, and that was to come out of the sales tax for courthouse improvements, 50%. I think we got a lot of air conditioning forward with that, using Harold Buzzer, piggybacking off of a contract with Boone County. Through the process, we met with them and decided that air conditioning would not be practical or wouldn't get the, would be feasible, wouldn't get the cooling that we would expect due to the number of doors going up and down. So, in working with them, came to a resolution that it would be better to go with a fan system, and Tyler might go into that a little bit in detail on how we came to that. We talked to them, and they was worried about garage doors going up and close, up and down all the time, and they said they was going to raise our bill like $2,500, our electric bill, a month. And they said that we would not be probably satisfied with the product after it was installed, so we decided to go with two four-foot by four-foot exhaust fans, or ventilation fans, and putting them on the front of the building, and the total price on that was $13,231. We were originally looking at in excess of $100,000 for air conditioning, and like I said, just through working with the contractor and determining that that'd be the best route to go, I think obviously they're doing this, and came to this conclusion, much cheaper.
Much cheaper.
And it will be compatible with future expansion of that facility as we move to the first or actually second phase of central maintenance, both in addition to the building with higher, higher ceiling, so we can work with that.
So the first guy in, when it's an 80-degree day, turns it on, and the last guy out turns it off? Is that how that works? That's the automatic part of it? Okay. Okay.
To make sure there's a door open.
Yes.
And the, the concept behind that is with a couple of garage doors open, it'll move that air through. That's the main problem there is it's taking, so.
Right.
If you move the air through, it cools, it goes through. There'll be a noise.
No, yeah.
Yep, I'm fine with it. I'm gonna help with the exhaust fumes and ventilation in general, so.
They said it wasn't very loud. I was thinking how loud that would be.
Well, compared to the tools and stuff in there, I don't think the fan's gonna be a big deal.
So this was a pretty good resolution, and I think we'll be happy with it. Definitely a lot cheaper.
Do these things sit on wheels that you can wheel them around?
They're actually mounted to the wall.
Oh, they're, oh, I see.
They go to the outside.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
They're not made to blow the air on you, it's just pulling air through like your attic fan a lot of times.
We do have those. Basically, it's-
They work so, so, but they get so, it gets so humid in there because you're putting water into the air, and when it's that hot outside and the humidity's up high, it's a hot box. I mean, it make you sweat.
Well, they're, they're okay up to a point, but then those portable units that have the water out, they blow the, basically-
Mist.
Mist.
Yes. Okay. All right.
I'm good.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal with Harold Buzzer for the exhaust fans and about $13,231.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, look at that, went breeze through. Anything else?
Did, did you two gentlemen receive an email from the clock people out of Cape? Am I the only, I must be the only one that got that. Okay, so I'll bring it up the next time, or send it, forward it to you.
Yeah, I was wondering if they had anything together, but they're like everybody else right now, everybody's really busy and-
Well, they have, I'll forward it to you. I did, we did receive a response, three alternate approaches to address the issue.
Then y'all probably got the emails, too, from Mac about the SB eight. Have we done a fiscal impact on that one? And that's the one with the eight? That's what I think it was?
Yes.
That's what we're down about.
This is-
Personal property tax.
Personal property tax reduction. They-
Well, normally I would get that from Larry, but Larry- Well, normally I would get that from Larry, but Larry's not here.
Their office is still open, so I'm going to figure out what the effect is, because I'm curious myself with the...
Actually, they're asking for some things. I'm not sure it's going to take more of the assessor, because the SB8 says once your vehicle is 10 years old, I don't know if the assessor, I guess he, well, it's in there, but I don't know if they actually sort by that.
They depreciate and they go to $1 after 10 years?
Right, but...
How you have to...
I think I'm paying $100 for a vehicle.
Well, historic vehicles, they're, they're going to increase the, and make it up for the difference.
I just, I guess that one was moving along, so...
That's not fair.
Anybody who has, what, four Historics? Three Historics?
Well, I have two Historics.
There you go.
Which ones are Historics?
The '78 Cadillac and the '79 Lincoln.
Two of the...
They have to be 25 years old.
Two of the vehicles and one of the drivers is Historic.
That hurt. That really hurt, yeah.
Well, back to your question, I, I don't think, usually some of that comes through oversight. Did you get anything from oversight on that one? You know, the fiscal mail request?
Well, I mean, I, we get these for all this stuff, but I have no way of calculating that. I mean...
Yeah.
A lot of that I use just to see what's out there that's relevant to us, but as far as that goes, the assessor would have to determine how many vehicles, and then the collector would have to determine what the tax is on those vehicles annually, and it's going to change every year anyway, because it probably would have gone down.
Well, they're asking for several things like that. It's going to take some, probably some digging in to do it. I mean, calculate the loss in the revenue from, if it goes from 31% of true value instead of 33.3%, would be probably the easy part.
That's the, that's the easy part. The other part that's difficult is the 10-year-old vehicles. Although, if you look at your personal property form, it's got the, it's got the year of your vehicle, but I don't know if they capture that somewhere. They go to a NADA or Kelly Blue Book that's already built into the system to come up with a, a number.
So we definitely could pull that out.
I, I think, you know, I think the answer ought to come from one of the counties that's already done the calculation and came up with a percent reduction instead of...
I don't know. So I don't have a problem with the bill in and of itself, but you know, when we lose that revenue, somewhere else has got to be replacing it, and you know, the property tax in and of itself is ridiculous. You have to keep paying for stuff the rest of your life, you don't ever really own it, so.
Schools would be the biggest...
I don't think it's going to affect them, no. I don't think it affects schools or fire districts or anything like that from the way it was explained to me, but...
But if you're reducing the total value, it would affect every taxing jurisdiction.
No, I don't think it does, not the way they were talking about it.
I don't even know how it could...
Well, it don't affect every tax.
Yeah.
Well, I...
Not the way they said, because they were saying that this would affect what we bring in, but then they'd be able to adjust there, so they didn't actually, they wouldn't lose on it.
Well, most of the schools are at their ceiling anyway, so I don't, I think they would. I mean, that's just an impression I'd have.
It just seems made that State Tax Commissioner or somebody could do this better statewide, because they're going to have to get 114 responses. They're going to get one from every county in the state to...
They can, no...
To get it really, you know...
On every bill going through, though, we get these fiscal requests, and so we can have 114 every time, so. I was just curious how much it did affect us.
It seemed like it'd be easier for the State, State Tax Commissioner to kind of estimate on that. It's just my opinion.
I don't, it was one of the lobbyists or someone was explaining that it wasn't going to affect the, the schools.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't affect the schools, then, then it must have a built-in replacement. Either the state's going to make up the difference, or someone else makes up the difference, because if you lower the assessed valuation or the evaluation, then the assessed valuation's going to lower the, the revenue, and if, if you're not harmed by that lowering, somebody's got to make up the difference. Maybe that's the historic vehicles we were talking about.
Lot of making up, Sam.
But when we go to electric vehicles, see, I can still have my, my historic vehicles as long as I can get gas for them.
I'll look at that, Jeff.
You like the numbers.
That's right.
Okay. Anything else? Our next scheduled meeting is March 21st at 9:00 AM. I would entertain a motion to stand in recess.
Before we do that, do we, is there some upcoming meeting at some point that we see there's a conflict, and how far out is that? That's way this fall, isn't it? Brian Boyce wants us to attend. Is that the Matco meeting?
And that would be like Tuesday, so I, I would like to go to that.
When's that Matco meeting?
October...
Okay, we're way off of that yet.
But we just changed the date of our commission meeting that day.
October 17th to 18th in Kansas City, near, north Kansas City, near the airport.
He, he lobbied us rather strongly to get...
I call it guilted. It's more than lobbied.
I was very impressed with, with Brian.
When you're in front of several other commissioners from other counties and having a chat, and, yeah, our commissioners have never been. All right, I guess one of us will have to make it this year. I'm like, maybe all three of us.
And you're all defense, you have a public works department and a director and a road superintendent. Most counties don't.
Brian's not here, so I just want to pick on him.
And you can pick on him, too, that's why.
Sheriff's not here either, so we didn't get to pick on him yet.
I'll go ahead and move that meeting that week to Monday, and then have your Tuesday...
Let's say tentatively we're going to do that.
Sure. We'll see when it works Monday or Wednesday. Monday meetings just, I don't know, it seems like they're tougher for people or not.
You might look at the agenda once it gets out there to see if it would be a value. It's, it's good. It's a good conference. A lot of good camaraderie amongst counties and everything.
Does Matco stand for something? Is that...
It's MAC TO, Missouri.
MACTO, M-A-C.
Missouri Association of County, and they added city transportation officials. So it's...
M-A-C-C.
Technically.
T-O.
But it still goes by the...
Okay.
It is the city, and it's still this name.
Well, I had a nice talk with the new president commissioner of Boone County, and of course, we took Brian away from Boone County, and he has been told by their Public Works Director that they need to come to Cole County to see our operations. So I thought, well, that's pretty amazing. Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
You just, I could do it over here.
Do I?
You in a hurry?
No.
Okay.
Now, we can, we can, we can dance, we can do whatever you want.
I have a meeting at 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
I'm actually, this is for discussion, okay?
I will make a motion.
Wait a minute, do you have something to say?
I have a meeting with just, you know, I have a meeting with Watco and Capitol at 10 o'clock. That's our operator for the Relbusburg, and we're navigating through a few things with Unit Pacific right now, so, very timely. They're actually coming into town. We had a phone call in last week, but their representative's coming to town, and we'll be here at that end.
Okay, good.
Things are moving along, and the bid, bid opens tomorrow on that project.
Good to know. I'll make a motion to stand in recess until 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.